Good evening, I'd like to call the orders of St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, June 19, 2023. Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Here.
Vanguard?
Here.
Munn?
Here.
Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Here.
Patilla?
Here.
Werbe?
Here.
Besner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Solcaydis?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Alderperson Lencioni.
Dear Lords, please give us the humility and strength to remember when things are challenging, as there are sometimes in your plans, don't go the way that you think they're going to as we go through the summer holidays and all that, to remember to count your blessings. No matter what's happening, we live in an absolutely amazing place with wonderful neighbors, we have wonderful people around us, and generally, things end up working better than they think you're going to, so please help us remember to count our blessings and be with us. Thank you so much. Amen.
Amen. Alderperson Solcaydis, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, one God, equal physical, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few presentations this evening. First, I will start with, as today is a federal holiday, our Juneteenth proclamation. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, which paved the way to formally abolish slavery in the United States, and whereas June 19th, 1865, marks the day when Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas, as the last Confederate states received the news that the Civil War had ended and all enslaved people were freed, and whereas June 19th became known as Juneteenth, a holiday celebrating the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas Juneteenth celebrates the freedom, achievements, and culture of Black Americans, and whereas on June 17th, 2021, Juneteenth officially became a federal holiday. Now, therefore, I, Laura Vitek, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2023, to be recognized as Juneteenth in St. Charles, a day to reflect on the ways Black Americans have enriched our society with their contributions, and to honor freedom, equality, and opportunity for all. Thank you. So now, I do like to celebrate things a lot, but I'm kind of sad that I get to celebrate someone this evening, Todd Bancroft. It's a little bittersweet. Hopefully, it is for you too. In recognition of Todd's achievements and service on city council, I've invited my friend, and former mayor, and one of our colleagues, and also a third board resident, to deliver some remarks about you, Todd. So Mayor Ray Ruggino, would you please come up to the podium?
Hello, friends. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for inviting me here tonight. Let me start immediately with a thank you to Alderman Bancroft. There was some question as to how long you could hang around after a particular turn of events, and as a resident of the Third Ward, I appreciate the fact that your tenure was extended, you graciously accepted, and that as a constituent, I have full representation on the city council with a seat that did not have to go vacant. Now, that's a perfect segue, ladies and gentlemen, to the purpose of my attendance here tonight. I am here to join with all of you in bidding farewell to this decade-long council member, Todd Bancroft. I do come with credentials. Alderman Bancroft filled my seat when I was elected mayor in 2013, and won the seat twice by support from Third Ward constituents. And by the way, I did vote for you twice.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I can speak quite a bit and quite candidly about this past decade, and I will. However, our relationship does go back to the mid-'80s, as Todd was a student of mine at St. Charles High School. Now, you should know he was a fine student, very mellow, like he is now. No ruffles and flourishes to announce his presence. He demonstrated logic and thought before he spoke. He was considerate of his peers, showing respect and dignity. And by the way, his final grade is under lock and key in my utility room. He used those attributes and many more as his degrees from University of Illinois and the University of Florida Law School, crafted a leader both in the private sector and here in the public sector. My engagement with him privately and on this dais allows me to paint a portrait of a serious analyzer on any city issue, always doing a cost-benefit analysis, and always measuring the opportunity cost of any one decision as to its short-term and long-term impact on the community. I never saw him grandstand an issue, and I certainly listened when he was chanted with his views on any issue. You know, as mayor, I always admired policymakers that see the big picture and understand that policymaking and the crafting of laws requires a degree of give and take. And as mayor, it does not take long to recognize and invest in those like Alderman Bancroft who adhere and live up to that standard. With Alderman Bancroft, I always felt that whether there was an agreement or disagreement on any particular issue, the solution was always at hand. Perhaps it's because I actually enjoyed debating and discussing issues with those who are without hidden agenda and are not very narrow in their perspectives. His legal training that offered the Socratic dialogue meant there was always another question to follow any answer. And I also appreciated the fact that Alderman Bancroft was available and responsive to his constituency despite his other job as a CEO of a major law firm. Now, if a resident of the Third Ward asked him, "Is this heaven?", he likely would respond, "No, it's St. Charles." He took the time, as we all must, to engage in dialogue with those who seek us out, seek us out to solve problems. Unlike current political trends, he never created a crisis. He never looked for a crisis. He always tried to resolve a crisis. In any organization, there's no such individual that is quite irreplaceable, or quote, "irreplaceable." A strong community like St. Charles will advance with those who truly believe in the community, working hand-in-hand to keep pace with an ever-changing set of dynamics and innovation and market forces. Change can be difficult, and not everyone can handle it. Having said that, Alderman Bancroft will be missed. That's because most of us in the Third Ward, and as a matter of fact, most of the community, like his respectful, idea-generating, supportive intellectual dialogue that lacks drama and showboating, but makes us all feel better about ourselves and our community. Alderman Bancroft's classmates saw this mindset in their school chum back in the '80s. I'm sure his college communities saw likewise, and I know his legal brethren experienced the same. Here in St. Charles, we all have been the beneficiaries of a guy who simply wanted to give back to a community he has loved. Finally, on a personal note, a teacher never hides pride and joy in a student who has made him proud right before his or her very eyes. Five decades in this community have afforded me the opportunity to see the end product of many former students who defy Thomas Wolfe and come home again and are true credits to spouses, children, family, and friends. Alderman Todd Bancroft certainly has added to my list of those who make me proud. Thank you, and God bless you, sir, and your family in all your future endeavors, and as always, God bless the City of St. Charles. Thank you.
I could never do better than him, but I will say two things. One, first, the first time I walked into this room prior to being an alderperson, you know, we were told, "Come to meetings so we can learn something before we become an alderperson or try to become one." You were the first person I see because you're in the middle, so you were intimidating. But I want you to know that you are so not that. You're so much more. Your professionalism, your leadership skills, all of what you have taught me has been very important to my career and just been a good example for all of us up here and all of us out here. And then, finally, as Ray mentioned about public service, we've had these conversations a lot. You truly make decisions and do what you do up there because it's the right thing for the people of St. Charles, not the right thing for you. It's the right thing for everyone and the residents and the businesses. So I applaud that. I think that's something that is a great example to have to new aldermen and new commissioners, so I want to say thank you for that. Thank you for everything you've given me as leader, but more importantly, thank you for everything you've done for the City of St. Charles. So we do want to take a photo, and your family is welcome to take a photo too, but I get to give out the first key I've ever given out. I get to give out the key of the City of St. Charles, and I haven't done this yet. So you are the first recipient by me for the wonderful key of the City of St. Charles. Okay. Ray, now. So, thank you.
So, settle, everybody. I got the mic now. Really, all I have to do is thank a bunch of people. And the first and foremost is my wife, Michelle. So, you know, this all started slightly over 10 years ago. I'm sitting on the couch, and I'm reading the Daily Herald, and there's an article in the Daily Herald that says, "No one is really stepping up to fulfill..." Who was mayor-elect at the time, Ruggino's Third Ward Aldermancy. And I'm like, "Wow!" So I fold up the paper, and I go into my office, and I come back out, sit down, and my wife goes, "What did you just do?" And I said, "I just sent my old teacher, Ray, an email," and that started the process. And one of the best things I've ever done in my life was that email. So it was fantastic. And, but, Michelle, thank you very much. You know, I did that when we had a 15-year-old and a 17-year-old. We were a very busy house. It was right after the Great Recession. We had a lot of things we were going through, and it required a lot of support, and she was right there with me the whole time. So thank you. Second, so I have remarks prepared to talk about a couple of people that were really important on my council tenure. And the first was Mayor Ruggino. And, you know, I debated on, you know, how do I characterize my relationship with him? And it's really, it started when I was in school. And I had a group of friends, and we all had such respect for the energy that Mayor Ruggino brought to the classroom, and such respect for, he had a great relationship with Tom Hayman, and they did these wonderful things as joint teachers. And he was really a hero of ours. You know, everybody talks about everyday heroes. And fast forward to getting the alderman appointment and working side by side with him as mayor for eight years, you are no less a hero to me, sir. Second to none in terms of public service, second to none in terms of a career, second to none in terms of your caring of a city that we both love. So hero was the only word I could describe. My feelings were right. The other person I was going to mention was Alderman Stolato. You've all, you know, heard stories of Alderman Stolato. Alderman Stolato taught me how to be an alderperson, taught me what to do, how to approach staff, how to work through problems, how to work with other council members, and I would be forever in his debt to that. Alderman Stolato was really a mentor for me on the council and just terrific. Third person that I want to thank is Mayor Vitek. And I will say that, you know, I grew up in a household with my mom, who was not just a working mom. She started working at Knutton Zach Realty when I was in second grade, selling homes, and worked her way up to being a senior officer of Sam's Cell Organization. So the respect I have for women in the workplace, but women in leadership positions that have to make so many sacrifices and have to do so much, both for family and for the paths they chose, is amazing to me. And then, layering, being mayor of St. Charles, just a tremendous amount of respect for what you give and how hard you work and the things that you do. So thank you, Mayor Vitek. I've enjoyed working the last couple of years, plus two months. And then, you know, I always get asked, "What are you most proud of?" You know, and you can talk about all these things, you know, the new police station, all the things that we worked on together, the Seventh Avenue Creek, all these. So what I'm most proud of is actually sitting at that table over there. So it dawned on me, as this was sort of coming around the bike, that I had, you know, a small part, I was part of, the selection of every person sitting there that is our city staff, and they are second to none. You all make us look so good. So I just wanted to say thank you to staff because we are really, truly the luckiest city in the world because you all care so much, you're so diligent, you work so hard, and it's just a fantastic environment that you've all created. So, you know, the staff and having the part in seeing that come together really makes me feel good about leaving now, that we're all in good hands and that things will be done. You know, I would like to thank the council, both current and former, lifelong relationship established on it. So it's been a great ride, and I love the city. So thank you all.
Before I turn the omnibus vote over to Alderperson Besner, item A3 on the agenda, there is a mistake. It was the government's correct meeting minutes incorrect date. So we'll approve the omnibus vote, but please make the correction, it wasn't May 15th, it is June 5th, 2023. And so now I will turn it over to you, Alderperson Besner.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as just stated by Mayor Vitek with a revised date.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Werbal. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any old business this evening, so under new business, item A, recommendation from me to approve a resolution to execute an agreement with the Delgado Law Group and appoint Kay Austin Zimmert to the position of Ethics Advisor for the City of St. Charles. If there are any questions from council, Heather and Nick are available.
Move, move.
Yes, right.
Yeah, just one question. So how is the pricing, is it competitive with the previous law firm that we use?
You want to take that one, Nick?
Yeah. Actually, I don't remember what attorney Vanek was charging, but the pricing for this attorney is the same as I charge.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Moved by Lencioni?
Second.
Seconded by Werbal. Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, a recommendation from me to approve the appointment of Robert Demm as warrant-free alderperson with term ending April 30th, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Besner. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, a recommendation from me to approve the appointment of Nikki Spelman. She is here this evening, as Liquor Control Commission Member with term ending April 30th, 2025.
Move for approval, second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Patilla. Vanguard, did we have questions?
No, I was...
You were trying to...
Yep.
Okay. Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
For items E and F, City Administrator McGuire will issue amendments. I will read E into the record, recommendation to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the City of St. Charles to execute a license agreement for the use of Highland Park for electronically fired fireworks and pyrotechnics displays, which also known as "just fireworks," on July 4th, 2023. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Both the next two agenda items are tied together. Normally, the fireworks permits would be presented without fanfare, but I'm sure council is very aware of some of the community feedback regarding the relocation of the fireworks. And I just wanted to give a little bit of background on that since I know there have been some questions that city staff has received. Just to clarify, this is a park district-held event, but obviously the city, as police and fire do provide emergency services as well as traffic enforcement to that event. So after Highland Park last year, everyone I'm sure recalls that we postponed our fireworks due to the safety issues that were happening in the area, as well as just wanting to make sure our residents were safe, not sure what was going on at that time. After Highland Park, the landscape unfortunately changed, and this has been occurring for a number of years as well regarding public safety and large community gatherings. And I know our police department has been involved, and I can't remember the exact number, but a significant number of trainings as a direct result of everything that has happened in Highland Park. And I don't want to minimize all the other tragedies that have occurred across the country, but this one, because of it hitting close to home, really caused us to take a look at our own policies and practices regarding our own fireworks as well as our other public gatherings. We did begin looking at alternate locations and working with the Park District just after 4th of July last year, and the reason we began to explore that was just because of some of the safety concerns from both the police and fireside withholding the fireworks at Potawatomi. As everybody recalls, the fireworks are currently, or in previous years, launched from Boy Scout Island with a viewing area in Potawatomi Park. The staff, both police and fire, as well as myself, I know the mayor attended a few of those meetings as well, met with the Park District to discuss these options and better locations from our police and fireside. After the most recent meeting we had, the Park District did determine that they wanted to relocate the fireworks in the interest of the public safety recommendations from our police and fire. So those are being relocated to a launch site at Langham Park with the ideal viewing location, we're hopeful at Mount St. Mary's Park. Obviously, we won't be sure until those fireworks actually occur, but we know at least south of the river, we believe, will be the best viewing area at this point. We do understand the frustration that a lot of the residents have had with the relocation because of the history of them being held in Potawatomi Park, but I just want to make sure that I'm on record saying that we have worked with police and fire diligently to make sure that our public, our residents, and any visitors to the area are being safe, being kept safe, and that we are able to respond appropriately if there are any incidents that occur. So do have Chief Keegan as well as Chief Swanson here to answer any questions, or I'm available as well if there are any questions on that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes, Alderfolks.
Yeah, well, first off, thank you guys for what you're doing here, trying to create a safer environment for this, no doubt. My question is, is this place our best location? Thinking somewhere out by Otter Cove where there's a lot more space, a lot more parking. I know traffic might be an issue, but what made us come to the conclusion that this was the next best option?
I know we do want to stay away a little bit from explaining all of the details on why there were some safety considerations and disposing all of that information, but from both a parking perspective, viewing perspective, as well as access perspective, this gave us the best location and allowed most of our resources to be directed more at the internal viewing area as opposed to being dispersed throughout the city as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Yes, Alderfolks.
So I just wanted to say that I admire the courage it took to make this change because I know this, probably you've had a lot of feedback on it, but, you know, the fact that your heart's in the right place, and I think it's, I think it's the right decision and, you know, I support it 100%.
Yes, right.
Regarding the parking situation compared to Potawatomi, is this an improvement? Do you see more or less challenges with the parking, and will there be parking restrictions in the neighborhood?
And Jim can speak a little bit on the parking restrictions. We have restricted the parking within the Potawatomi Park neighborhood, so we see it as generally a neutral parking situation. The same access will be available to the downtown parking garages as well as the lots over and towards Mount St. Mary's. So we think it'll end up being pretty close to what it was before with not having the neighborhood available in Potawatomi Park, but it was something that we looked at as part of the consideration.
Yeah, we're still finalizing our final plans. Matter of fact, we're meeting with the Park District tomorrow. But, you know, that this area that we chose along with the Park District does offer different points of ingress and egress, not only for vehicles but also pedestrians. But to Heather's point, the parking garages are still available. We will have some street closures.
Okay.
And we're working through the fine details in that over the next week or two, but I think it'll be probably neutral from a parking perspective.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion on item E.
So move.
Second. Moved by Werbal, seconded by Bancroft. Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, a recommendation to approve the St. Charles July 4th fireworks display.
Move, move. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Werbal. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee report. Government operations, Alderperson Werbal.
Yes, item A2, I'd like to make a motion, looking for a second, I'm seeking to approve and execute a resolution for a license agreement with CIBC Bank USA.
Second.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Besner. Any questions, comments? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Vanguard?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Thank you. Government services, Alderperson Bongar. Any things further?
Nothing further.
Planning and development, Alderperson Bancroft.
Yes, I have item 6 through 9. It's my understanding that Alderperson Lencioni...
Yeah, I was going to say, excuse me for a second. I need to refuse myself from this discussion due to conflict of interest.
Yeah, what I was going to say was Alderperson Lencioni and Bongar are recusing themselves from this discussion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept and place on file Plan Commission Resolution Number 3-2023, a resolution recommending approval of an application for special-use PUD amendment for First Street Development PUD Grocery Store Sign, 300 South Second Street, SDGFTU LLC.
Second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Besner. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I do have a comment. Last meeting, I had asked for an opinion from our attorney. I did receive one Friday, so I'll be voting yes on these.
Thank you, Alderperson Solcaydis. Okay, we have moved by Bancroft, seconded by Munn. Nancy, please call the roll.
Folks?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Solcaydis?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance, amending ordinance 20...
Yes.
Pilkadis?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the city of St. Charles to execute an economic incentive agreement, the city of St. Charles and SDGFTU LLC.
Second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Patilla. Any comments? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folk?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pilkadis?
Yes.
Okay, number nine, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk of the city of St. Charles to execute an amended and restated Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions, and Easements, 300 South Second Street and First Street Redevelopment Lots 6 and 14.
Munn, second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Munn. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Folk?
Yes.
Munn?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Pilkadis?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any public comments this evening?
I do have a few comments. Mr. Gemm could be there here this evening. He was appointed. We will be wearing him in next Monday night. Thank you, Vicki, for attending tonight. We will be having a city council workshop on June 26th. It will start around 4:45, just so everyone's aware, in public. Yep, 5:00. We are canceling July 3rd meeting just due to lack of agenda items, so we'll meet again as a city council on July 14th. Happy Fourth of July to everyone. And, oh, okay. Okay, go ahead. You can come on up.
Two good things. Tom Anderson, 712 Horn Street. Number one, putting together this grocery store contract, and it's called Incentive Package. And I think Mr. Derek Conley, economic director, did a lot of work on it, and he deserves a compliment from the council for doing what he did. I think it's good. Oh, all right. And number two, I thought there was going to be a parking study approved tonight, but maybe it's coming. But anyway, the parking study, I'm glad it's happening now because I think part of this grocery store is getting parking that's already been public parking, going to be designated to them. So when you study the town, you're going to know that that won't be used for the general public, it's going to have to be analyzed, so.
And Mr. Anderson, just for clarification, on planning development, under omnibus vote, there was less resolution to approve?
Well, it was, okay.
Yeah, but it was under omnibus because they discussed it.
So anyway, compliments on doing a parking study, since we've got so many new businesses occupying existing space downtown, which is fantastic. It's not like tear down something, but just use it. It has generated more people, which means more parking needs. And the third item isn't on the agenda today, but on last Thursday morning, they had the final local committee, if you will, for the parking and pedestrian study, whatever we call it. I was on that committee. So one of the things the consultant said, you here are supposed to be champions of this plan, okay? I'm going to be the first one to be a champion of the pan to all of you guys because you haven't seen it yet to vote on it, that you hopefully go forward and vote for having a better St. Charles as far as the walking and biking. And I'm going to add the other element that I think consider, but it isn't part of the study, is the driver education. Maybe that's Chief Keegan. The driver education for bikers, watching for bikers, and old guys like me, it gets to be worse sometimes, but anyway, for safety in St. Charles, this biking, walking, and driving, a safe St. Charles could come from this study, and that's going to be coming forward. So I make my, I'm the first one to champion this plan to you guys all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. The only other thing I will say, and I will echo it, you can just sort of touch about it. No, you don't need to say it. You can go there. We're all good. I was just complimenting what you said and echoing what you said because of the fact that staff has worked very hard.